Last week, the Barry City Council introduced another important motion without prior notice. The motion put forward by Ward Six Councillor Negusi Negusi will strip the library of its independence by requiring it to seek approval from the city council for any future capital reserve spending.
The purpose of this motion is to ask service partners, specifically our library, to seek approval from city council for a capital reserve spending moving forward. One of the city council's strategic plan priority is responsible governance. This change ensure our spending aligns with strategic goals and commitment to transparency and accountability.
The motion that I have in front of me reads only the library, but you mentioned the other service partners. Could you outline what service partners, all of our service partners? Would that include Simcoe County and the police department?
Yeah, all service partners, but the motion is focused on the library.
Although Negusi emphasized accountability and responsible governance for all service partners, the Barry Police Service with an annual budget of more than $60 million will continue to spend money freely. In contrast, the library has an annual budget of less than $10 million.
I'm just wondering why it was brought forward as a motion without notice? Because it doesn't look like there's anything urgent on this that needs a motion without notice? That the new library hasn't, the library has hired a new accountant that just opened, gotten the door. So I would think that this would, should be deferred. I feel that this should be deferred to go through proper channels, proper other channels, traditional channels in the fall.
Even though there are no current capital projects undertaken by the library at this time, Negusi and Mayor Alex Nettle did not clarify why there was a need for a motion without involving the library or Barry residents. Following is the video of the meeting.
We have another motion without notice moved by Councillor Negusi. So Councillor Negusi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle, moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Harvey. That consideration of municipal act and Public Library Act, that staff in the finance department work with the Public Library Board to bring forward a financial policy for council's consideration that improves financial governance and oversight. Oh, should I, should I, okay. I apologize.
It's okay. I've made about three mistakes tonight, so you're allowed to make one. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Harvey. Motion without notice, Barry Public Library capital spending. That pursuit of Section 7.1, the procedural bylaw 2019/100, permission be granted and introduce a motion without notice concerning the Barry Public Library capital spending. Two-thirds of majority vote is required.
Thank you, Councillor Negusi. It's moved by Councillor Negusi and seconded by Councillor Harvey. The motion without notice, Barry Public Library capital spending. The pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning the Barry Public Library capital spending. A two-thirds majority is required, as Councillor Negusi had said. So all those in favor? And it, sorry, all those in favor, please put your hands up. And it carries. Councillor Negusi.
Thank you again. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Harvey. That the consideration of municipal act and Public Library Act, that staff in finance department work with Barry Public Library Board to bring forward a financial policy for council's consideration that improves financial governance and oversight related to allocation of grant and use of library reserve. And that until such time as a councillor approved, financial policy is in effect. The library board seek city council approval for any capital expense that have not been previously approved by city councils through the annual budget process, and I can speak to that.
Thank you, Councillor Negusi. It's moved by Councillor Negusi and seconded by Councillor Harvey. The Barry Public Library capital spending. One, that in consideration of municipal act and the Public Libraries Act, that staff in the finance department work with the Barry Public Library Board to bring forward a financial policy for consideration by council that improves financial governance and oversight related to the allocation of grants and use of library reserves. Two, that until such a time as council approved, financial policies in effect, the library board seeks city council approval for any capital expenses that have not been previously approved by city council through the annual budget process. Councillor Negusi, the floor is yours.
Mayor Nettle, members of council. The purpose of this motion is to ask service partners, specifically our library, to seek approval from city council for a capital reserve spending moving forward. One of the city council's strategic plan priority is responsible governance. This change ensure our spending aligns with strategic goals and commitment to transparency and accountability. By requiring the library and other service partners to present their plan for capital reserve spending to city council, we foster a better understanding of their needs and goals while ensuring a careful allocation of resources. I am confident this change will empower Barry Library and other service partners for a long-term success. With council's oversight, Mayor Nettle and members of council, we can help them navigate challenges and seize opportunities for the growth. Let us take this step forward, responsible governance, demonstrating our dedication to the practical use of public fund. So I urge council to support this motion for the benefit of our service partner and community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Negusi. Are there any questions or comments? I'm going to go to Councillor Corser first, as she sits on the Barry Public Library Committee, then I'll go to Councillor Kangal following that, and then Councillor Harvey following that.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this forward through you, Mayor Nettle, to, I guess, Councillor Negusi. It, the motion that I have in front of me reads only the library, but you mentioned the other service partners. Could you outline what service partners, all of our service partners? Would that include Simcoe County and the police department?
Yeah, all service partners, but the motion is focused on the library. As you know, I am in the board for Barry Public Library.
Okay, so I guess this would be a question for staff. Do we usually decide, does the city of, does the city actually approve capital expenses for any of our service partners at this time?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Councillor Corser. So if we look at the county, we have a service level agreement with the county that basically dictates how they present their budget, how we fund it. The police, we are products of the province, so there's different legislation for different service partners. So the police bring forward their budget. I believe they do have capital requests in there. With arrangement with the police, municipalities do have sort of limited abilities to, you can influence their budget, but ultimately if council weren't, didn't approve a police budget, they have the opportunity to appeal up to the province to get approval. And the library board, again, you're governed by the municipal act, excuse me, and the Public Library Act, and it's, there's a lot of gray areas in that, but there is a requirement under the municipal act that the city council does approve their budget. So it's, each partner is sort of dictated by different legislation. But generally speaking, there is a requirement to seek, if you're seeking funding from the city, whether it be capital or operating, you do get the opportunity to approve it or comment on it.
Just to follow up on that, so we traditionally, or historically, we don't approve, like, the Simcoe County, or the Barry Police don't, wouldn't come to council, or historically up to this point, the library would not come to city council to request, would not need to come to city council to request approval for any capital funds at this point?
So.
Oh, sorry, sorry, just to clarify, outside of budget.
So through you, Mayor Nettle, to Councillor Corser. So generally speaking, the process is a requirement that you do come, the partners, the library in this case, is to present their budget to council, which council approves. I would say the level of detail provided to council perhaps doesn't show if there was capital in there or not, but generally speaking, council approves a municipal grant. Then historical practices being, the library is given those funds to operate the library. Many years ago, there was a library reserve, multiple reserves created that was used by the library board. So above and beyond the capital expenditures approved by council or operating expenditures, there might have been opportunities where the library board approved to use those funds. I can't speak to the specifics of it going back in history, but generally speaking, the use of those reserves has been, been, been used by that board. So if they didn't provide enough detail in the budget that came to council, there could have been funding arrangements to utilize those reserves, but the detail may not have been clear. But generally speaking, I would assume that most of the major capital purchases would have, would have come through council.
I'm sorry, just a little bit of clarity on that. So say any of our service partners wanted to renovate their building, which would be a capital expense, they would or would not traditionally come to council? I don't remember this being part of what has happened so far, as long as I've been sitting on council, but that doesn't mean it hasn't happened. Like, if the, if the police wanted to renovate the inside of their building, or the county, would they need to come to us to ask permission for that?
So through you, Mayor Nettle, so if the city owns the asset, yes.
Okay, okay. So another, I just wanted, I'm wondering the urgency to bring this forward? Because as I understand, there's no capital projects active at this time with the Barry Public Library, and the Barry Public Library needs a board motion to, like, I guess, initiate any capital projects, which they have not, and their last meeting for the year is next week, and there's nothing on the agenda to put forth anything for a capital budget, a capital expense. And my understanding is, through you, Mayor Nettle, to, I guess, again, Mr. Miller, the city staff needs a library board motion to move funds for them to access them for any kind of a capital expense? Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, so yes, I would imagine the direction. So the library board is operating the library.
Yep.
So yes, if they are utilizing their reserves, just like they approve their budget that comes to city council, they would be required to get, seek their board to approve most transactions or use of their funds. So that, I assume that that would be correct.
And that I don't, I haven't, sitting in their meetings, there's nothing been passed requesting any funding, and there, you haven't seen any requests?
Other than what we have in the budget, I don't have that detail. And we, you know, the library board operates the library and staff, so I'm not, we're not part of their operational side of things, or from the accounting side of it. So other than what they've provided to council, I wouldn't be able to comment. Or if it's been a public motion, like, you know, that would be the other avenue where I would see it. But at this time, I don't have any information on that.
Yeah, because sitting on the board, there hasn't been anything. There was discussion of investigating something, but not to access any funding regards for it. And, well, I appreciate the first part of the motion. That staff and finance department work with the public library to bring forward a financial policy for council's consideration that improves financial governance and oversight related to the allocation of grants and use of library reserves in partnership with the Barry Public Library. But the second half of the motion, as it reads here, "Until such a time that council approved, financial policy is in effect. The library board seeks city council approval for any capital expenses that have been previously approved by city councils through the annual budget process." I'm just wondering why it was brought forward as a motion without notice? Because it doesn't look like there's anything urgent on this that needs a motion without notice. And I found out today as well, just for further, maybe assistance on this, to work with the city on this, that the library has just hired an accountant two weeks ago, and they're still getting their feet wet, and they are still trying to learn the ropes, as it's just joining. And as we all know, library finances are a very odd beast indeed, trying to wrap our heads around how the library is, their finances are so different than business finance or municipal finance. That I was hopeful that maybe we could maybe defer this, this motion until September, where the new accountant that works at the Barry Library will be more understanding, get their bearings, and more be able to participate in the, this motion as a whole going forward? Because there doesn't seem to be much urgency, because there's nothing on the, urgent now for, there's no capital expenditures coming up until the fall? If so, not right now, there could be in the fall. And also that the new library hasn't, the library has hired a new accountant that just opened, gotten the door. So I would think that this would, should be deferred. I feel that this should be deferred to go through proper channels, proper other channels, traditional channels, in the fall. Through, I guess, deferred to finance and responsible governance. I don't know if that's a motion or.
So deferring refers to a time period, not a place. Referring refers, outlines a place. If you would like to make, put an amendment forward, you need to write that out, get a secondar, and then present it. So if you'd like to do that, you can definitely do that, but I don't have anything in front of me from you on this.
Okay, no, I just, yes, this is the motion without notice, so I'm just.
Okay.
Sorry, this is the motion without notice, so if I can write an amendment to the motion, I'm wondering. I do have a secondar?
So my understanding is you did have notice. The motion without notice is referring to it not being on the agenda on Thursday. I'm told that you were spoken to, or spoke with each other, I guess a better description, earlier this morning. So I haven't received anything today. If you'd like to work on an amendment, and I think, Councillor Kangal, you'd like to second that amendment, we're totally good to do that. What I'm going to do is go to Councillor Kangal on the main motion here, while that's being worked on, and then we'll come back to you after.
Okay, can I just make a clarification?
Sure.
I just found out, like, I've just received the last of my information, I requested like about 20 minutes ago, so this is.
Right, okay. Councillor Kangal.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. And I did have the chance to have a quick call with Councillor Negusi Negusi, and I think I communicated my concerns with some of the framing before I was able to see it in writing. I will not be supportive of it. I have some suggestions that I'll add in my commentary, but I guess I'll frame them as questions specifically. So while I think verbally, the conversation has talked about service providers, it is targeted, it is specific to the Barry Public Library. I guess my question for Councillor Negusi Negusi is, does the leadership and or board, are they aware that this is coming to council as a member of the board?
The CEO knows, and Councillor Corser knows.
But the full board of the public library, your peers on that board, do you not know this is coming to council tonight?
No.
Okay. My other comment was concerns about, where in I see it, and I'll look maybe to frame a question after I make this comment to Mr. Miller. The library's done their due diligence, they've come to city council, we've approved the budgets. The money that you're talking about within the capital reserve is money that's already been approved. Some of it could be dollars that are surplus from other means, it could be blended with donor dollars. Are we talking about a financial bucket that you have any discerning information on as to whether or not that's specifically municipally funded, or is it also a mix of donor dollars?
Counselor, is it municipally funded or, and/or donor dollars? Or, I don't, there might be other means grants, et cetera.
That was my question, Mayor Nettle. I asked the library staff to break down their surplus, their reserve capital. So far, I haven't got that response, so I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Negusi. Because I guess it would say, that lends into me feeling not comfortable anyways around touching dollars, maybe donor dollars, and having a control into that around how they can use it or asking for permission to use dollars that they've already been approved for. I'll share after, maybe I'll go forward if the intention is to change a policy or add a financial policy in place. That may be something that is looked at for all service providers, about how surplus is identified, and if they come back to council to say, you know, you've approved us in the budget for this amount of money, we didn't end up filling a position, we've got, you know, $150,000 in surplus from what we were going to intend to spend it on. You know, we don't have a financial policy right now, we're in other systems like the health system. You would come back and say, okay, here's a surplus. We'd actually really like to still keep the money and use it for this, and do you approve that? Like, right now, my understanding is they keep the surplus, and some of that can go into reserves like capital. So that would be something I would say, completely open to having a conversation where there's merit in the fall when we're back, and we can have good dialogue about, is there a better financial policy we can put in place for all service providers? I am not aware, having gone through the budget and since, when I read this, for me, it feels like it's, and I don't necessarily mean that this is your intention, but I would only be doing this type of approach. One, if I felt there had been any type of financial issues. So they go through their own audit, they share their financial statements. It's money that's been approved, that they've been able to allocate within their right to capital reserves. I feel like this is an internal board conversation that needs to happen if you're not getting information that you want. But I feel like it's an arms-length overreach for us to be saying, until, you know, the board gets, or members of the board get what they want, the city's going to get into the sandbox with them and say, you can't touch your assets that we've historically approved and can't even differentiate if they're municipal dollars or donor dollars. So that's where, I just can't support this. I would say, I think there's lots of room for a conversation about financial policies around how surplus is identified and reallocated, and that, I would welcome that conversation and even be happy to put that on the table at a finance agenda in the fall. I guess I would ask Mr. Miller, is there anything I don't understand about our role in this, about it being in appropriate reach for us to tell them, pause, you have to come to us for permission? Because I feel like that's completely out of scope of our ability to be a gatekeeper on this funding.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, I would probably say, I think the intent of the first part of the motion is to clarify the fact, the last two years and the discussion tonight, there is a lot of questions being asked. So it's, the idea is to kind of clarify with the board, with council, under the acts, this is the responsibilities, this is the reporting requirements, this is what the information we need. So that's really the intent of, to clarify going forward. I think that's not an overreach. I think that's a healthy opportunity to avoid all the multiple debates. In terms of, does council have the ability to go in and take money that's sitting in library reserves? I'm not a lawyer, but I think that's probably a reach that you don't have authority over without boards, even the library board's agreement on that. So I think the opportunity is to clarify the rules of engagement, so it's kind of, if you don't have so many questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. So I would say, Councillor Negusi, if you feel that this stands in light of that conversation, you've coupled them together, I absolutely cannot support this. I would be happy to work with you about how we could craft conversations about financial policies that deal with surplus. I don't know if that's your intention in this, but I think overall, it would be good for us to get into a very clear process before we get into budget. Time and presentations by any of our service providers about what exactly, we had a lot of questions about last year, because we put some of them through the gauntlet of questions, of Q and A, and they were, you know, they did, every, every partner participated in trying to get us timely information. Now, whether or not we feel good about that or clear about that, but I think the intention is, we want to have and feel like we're making informed decisions on a budget, and so let's be clear then, this fall, before we ask them to present, and they're preparing their budgets, is what exactly do we want to see? And disclosure, and what does that look like?
Thank you, Councillor Kangal, for your comments and for the questions. My question, just to clarify, so number one, it sounds like you're good with, but number two, you feel, so you're not, so you're not okay with number one?
Number two, I'm not.
Sorry, okay, so number two, you're not good with because the, either is or could be perceived as an overreach into the operations of the library?
Yeah, I think we're blending governance, I don't think that's within it. If you want to separate it, then I'll assume that the language of number one is not punitive, but it is an intention to improve financial conversations and disclosure and governance. It's not a judgment on current governance or financial management, because I've got no concerns with how they're operating.
Is there, is there anywhere in there that you would, and I'm, this is my motion, but, be open to something in terms of request instead of that it happen?
I think it's just like when you're getting into a financial policy, it does target one particular agency. So, I mean, I'd almost rather you defer this, you work on this. The Public Library Board has a conversation about concerns or what this is intended, and it's something that actually comes to us on behalf of the board that says we're willing to participate, and this is a scope of participation that we're interested in, rather than a member of the board.
I have Councillor Harvey, then I've got Councillor Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor Nettle. And obviously, I seconded this, I do support it as the Chair of Finance and Responsible Governance, because I think this is very much aligned with the guidelines of that committee. And I'm a huge supporter of the library, like, I pushed the first term to get the Holly Library branch open. It was the first kind of what I would say boutique-style library. However, it was an eye-opening experience going through that at the same time, and not always for good reasons. And that's where I support that there needs to be better governance, not only with this service partner, but possibly with other service partners. However, this particular service partner has always raised questions at budget time, not just through this term, but through last term, because of some of the concerns with their budget. And what I've seen since term one to term two is the budget that's being presented to us has been very much dumbed down and not as detailed as what it once was. And I've highlighted that to the CEO the past two years in a row, because I would like to see more detail, opposed to just four or five lines, that have dollar amounts and very little detail to them. Whereas if you look back five, six years ago, their budgets looked very different. I guess my first question would be to Mr. Miller. When it comes to their reserve account, because I know some of the other accounts, they actually do fall within the city and stuff, but the actual reserve account, is that held within a city account at all? Or is their reserve account totally standalone with their own bank and such forth?
So through you, Mayor Nettle, so just understand, it's a reserve account, it's an accounting entry. Like, it's, it's, there's no money, they don't have their own bank account, flows through us. But the reserve is in their GL, isn't under their preview, or purview, it's on their financial statements. So it is under their, their realm of control.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks. I thought that's the way it was, but I just wanted a little bit of clarity. Now, a few years ago, when, and I believe the figure was somewhere in the neighborhood of about a million dollars to redo Paineswick, and that was outside of any budget request. When that was done, do you recall ever any type of requests being made? Or how would have that taken place? Because I, I was told that it was done through the reserve account to be able to redo all the furniture at the Paineswick location, and the furniture that they replaced was only 10 years old.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Councillor Harvey, I'd have to go back and look into that, to see if it was, came through council, or was approved directly by their board. So I'm sorry, I can't answer that at this point.
Great, thank you. So it is my understanding that at the most recent board meeting, there was some discussions about further capital expenditures. was some discussions about further capital expenditures in relation to some further furniture purchases that was north of $1 million. And that was in public session, so I'm not speaking out of term when I speak about that. And that's where the concern comes from. And when I've asked in the past as the Chair of Finance to the CEO, when it comes to your reserve account, what's the makeup? What percentage of it is true reserves from taxpayers' dollars opposed to dollars that would have been donated by supporters of the library? And they don't have that answer because they don't know. And that, in my opinion, is poor accounting. And so obviously, they can't fix what's already gone backwards. So hopefully, having an accountant in place now, things will change moving forward. But their reserve account is quite healthy. There's a few million dollars there. And that's a concern that potentially more furniture could get replaced, that doesn't necessarily be, need to be replaced. And even that 10-year-old good furniture that they probably could have sold, instead it got donated. So that's where sometimes I look at some of the decisions that are being made, and they're not quite as what I would say responsible as what I would like to see or what we would probably do around this table. And we've seen other service partners that, just this past budget time, ended up turning back excess amounts to the tune of, it was either 1.2 or 1.7 million dollars. 1.2, yeah, thank you, Mayor. And that was from the police, who are always on the radar and always getting scrutinized with everything that they do. We haven't seen anything of that from this particular service partner. And if I didn't have concerns about maybe what I would say excessive spending in areas that don't need to be happening, then I wouldn't even be talking like this. But even during the Holly process, they were ordering high-end appliances for their staff room that I can't even afford to put in my own house. So why would you put it in a staff room? And that's where I really have concerns with some of the decisions that get made. And that's where I give kudos to Counselor Negusi for bringing this forward, because you have to wear two hats. When you're around that board table as a member of the public library, you have to act in the best interests of the public library. But then when you come back here to this table around council, you have to act in the best interest of the taxpayers of the city of Barry. And I think that's exactly what this motion does. And this is exactly what Counselor Negusi is doing. And that's why I will support this and continue to support this, because I've seen things firsthand that caused me concerns, even before I received the phone call from Counselor Negusi.
Thank you, Counselor Harvey. I'm going to go to Counselor Hamilton now. And then I'll go to Counselor Morales after that.
Thank you, and through you. And thank you, Counselor Harvey. You did clarify a lot of my comments. And I was quite supportive of this when talking to Negusi. And I got a little bit muddied there, because it was my understanding as well that the library was looking at some new capital investments, and that was part of the public session. So I was a bit confused. And that's why I thought that this conversation was more imminent than supposed to deferring it. So, and I remember during budget time, I also had concerns about some of their budgeting practices as well, the amount of reserve they had. Just if I can ask Mr. Miller, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but can you remind me again what their overall budget is and how much they have in reserves, like ballpark figures? Do you have that handy?
It's 9.8 million, just under 10 million. There's 1.8 million, I believe, in reserve. There was an unallocated surplus of about 550,000 to 600,000. And Mr. Miller's going to tell me I'm off by 100,000 on every number I just gave you.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, that's close, very close. Budget was 9.3. The city's contribution was 9.3 from the operating budget. And they have, I think, $2.9 million capital reserve. And then they have some smaller amounts for book replacements. But the main, the main reserve is their capital, sorry, 2.6 million.
2.6 million, okay. And I think I recall that from their funding standpoint, it was like 98% funded from the municipality. Is that correct as well?
I think on average, the last five years, it's more and more around 92, 93.
Okay. So of that 2.6 million dollar reserve that you mentioned, we could guesstimate that probably the majority of that is coming from the city's leftover budget that they have received on the taxpayers.
Correct. I think that would be reasonable.
Okay. So for me, and I remember during this budget, I was like, holy smokes, I work in the nonprofit world. I have, I have never seen reserves in this proportion ever in Ontario. So, and I remember looking at the Public Libraries Act, and it is silent on reserve funds. It doesn't really dictate how much they can have or how they should spend them or who holds them. I looked up the municipal act as well, and it does say that library boards have the authority to have reserve funds. And common practice is that municipalities hold the library reserve funds for them. So I do think there's a, there's a lot of improvement that can be made here from, from a governance, financial oversight position. And I do believe we need to relook at the financial policies here. I don't understand how a library can accumulate 2.6 million dollars in reserves. I just think that is, we're overfunding them year over year, right, and allowing them to accumulate this. Of course, there is a certain percent of a reserve that you should have for wind-up costs and for repair costs and whatnot. But that, to me, is just out of the ordinary, and alarms did go off. So that, and combined with sort of some of the notion that they're looking at, again, some new investments, some new capital costs, I'm worried if we do defer this. And I don't sit on the board, so I don't know what conversations are had. I'm only privy to what's been in the public and what I've had access to. So I'm a bit hesitant to defer, because I don't know if I have the trust there. Also, hearing Counselor Kerser's comments that they just have a new accountant on board, like, I think maybe it is time to say, whoa, let's just pause as we have new employers, as we're, you know, have some questionable practices when it comes to accounting and finances, to look at our policies that are in place right now. I mean, that's our fiduciary responsibility. So I'm inclined to support this, and thank you for bringing it forward. I hope nobody's feeling like they're being targeted. That's not the point here. Our point is never to target out people, but it's really to look at our fiduciary responsibility. That's why we're sitting in these chairs and to make sure that the partners that we're funding are employing best practices when it comes to financial oversight. So if we have any concerns or questions, I think it's our responsibility to take a pause. If someone wants to, you know, reword it a little bit, fine, but I'm hesitant to defer. And I do think we should have put a pause on any further spending, or it has to come through us, or we're supportive of it coming through us if you want to change some wording there. But otherwise, I'm supportive of the motion as it stands.
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton, and Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. For me, this is about basic project management. I want to know what our service partners are doing to our buildings, our capital. I'll give an example. So, and Ms. McCallum probably helped me remember, police were still in their building at Spurling in 2016, 2017, around that time, right? Because the station would have been 2017. So, for example, this is a hypothetical, it didn't happen, but if the Barry Police Service had committed to doing major capital investment at Spurling Drive in 2016, and we didn't hear about it through our board appointees, and for whatever reason, it'd be nice for us to hear about it. I would have wanted to hear about it because we were about to surplus that building and build a new station. And now, Spurling, all these years later, is being surplus. So that would have been an unfortunate, avoidable capital expense. So it goes back to what I said. This is about good, good, basic project management. If we know what our service partners are doing in terms of capital investments, even in the form of a presentation, a report, a memo, it's no different than when staff come back with a year-end surplus of our tax base, or say, this project's being deferred, this project needs a top-up. It's the same thing. And so I'm supportive of the end principle. I very much, in good, in good faith, I received Counselor Kangal's comments, though. So if there are tweaks that need to be done because of the reserve, I'm sure we'll get an email. Like, we tried to do a patio, we tried to do a program during COVID, and we got a memo back saying you can't do this. So it's not the first time if we have to do a few tweaks. So that's not going to hold me back from wanting to separate these. And finally, Mayor Nettle, I just want to say quickly, it's not my job to defend you, Counselor Negusi, but I do want to support your autonomy to bring this motion to us without necessarily having it to the board. And here's why. Just as I said earlier about the sandbox, we are the appointees from council to these boards. We're not the board appointees to the council. So the dynamic, now, in a perfect world, could your, could your timing or your situation have been like, I got lucky. The sandbox met last Tuesday, all of this came up, and there was one more meeting. Like, we're texting Ms. Schlichter, you're getting it at your desk. The timing worked out. But it, so, but I don't think you meant any disrespect. I don't think anybody implied that you meant disrespect. But I think that your autonomy to bring a motion without notice, that's why we have these processes, and that's why we have this. And I just want, again, I don't need to defend you, but I do want to reiterate the fact that we are appointees to our service partners' boards. And I know in the past, staff members have brought up the fact that it's always tough wearing those two hats, but I don't find this unusual in any way. And I think that, as Counsel Harvey has said, over the years, the library staff and board members, and we have multiple term members who have been there for a while, they have heard this loud and clear from council. So this is not, by any means, any surprise. And at the end of the day, it's not about a gotcha moment, it's just about better project management and alignment. Like, what if, you know, what if we don't know, but in our long-term capital plan, they're just investing in the wrong thing? And we want to be able to pivot. So because of those reasons, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Harris.
Great. And thank you, Mayor Nettle. I thought I wouldn't speak to this, but the conversation has certainly been very interesting. And, yeah, I was similarly supportive of the first paragraph and wondered about the second one being an overreach. And then, you know, and I'm reflecting on the conversations over the last few years regarding the library budget. I'm always, you know, interested in the difference between municipally-funded service partners and provincially-funded transfer payment agencies. And it's really interesting, and Counselor Hamilton alluded to it. I mean, if you're funded provincially and you're a transfer payment agency, you have to balance your budget. There's no, there's no deficit. If you have unused funds, you have to return them. There's no, we're going to keep a reserve on the side. And there's no option to present every year for an annual increase. You don't get those. But here we are, at this level of government, the funding that we have, with nine cents on the tax dollar, service partners having some real luxuries, and good for them. But I'm curious, when, when we have a 2.6 million dollar reserve, and maybe Mr. Miller, you can, through you, Mayor Nettle, can refresh my memory, how much did we increase their budget this year? What did they ask for, the library?
2. something. I'm hearing 1.9 from Deputy Mayor.
I'm getting older. My memory's alluding, they're going to have to, have to give me a few minutes to look that up.
So they asked for an increase, and they had a reserve. I just, I think, you know, it's really interesting. And also, if I remember correctly, can I, there was discussion about the reserve, and I think some of the really fair rationale was there was plans for this reserve to be directed to a new library. Am I correct in that? Ms. Miller, sorry?
I would have to defer to the board members. I don't have that information.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm just, thank you. I'm just seeing that the increase, the city portion was $517,000, this city's budget. So maybe through you, Mayor Nettle, to either of the board members, is that part of the understanding, that if I'm correct, that it was maybe you come from Corser, thank you, Counselor Corser, that the reserve is in part, largely in part to be dedicated to new library?
I am not an accountant, through you, Mayor Nettle. I am not an accountant, and I don't play one on TV. And my understanding is, and I'm sure this will come out, further details and understanding of this will come out in, when the staff work with the Barry Public Library for their financial policies and understanding. So we have a better understanding at the table, so we don't have these conversations. They do not have a capital reserve, they have reserves. And my understanding is, is that fund is for funding satellite or secondary, third libraries in different areas of the city in the future, and for whatever expenses, capital expenses that they have in the future. That is what that fund is for.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. So it's good to know that, the fact that they're, you know, accumulating a surplus year in, year out, and asking for an increase in their budget every year that I've been on council, which is now six budgets, that money that our taxpayers are putting into the library, which is, I'm going to guess, in the neighborhood of 92% of that surplus, because that's how their funding generally is weighted. It feels like, you know, something seems to be amiss, and there's opportunity. And I think those of you who may be concerned about the conference about the library, I can remember last term, BIA was definitely, there was efforts from council to make some changes from this side of the table. Certainly, the police services, police have been called to question in the County of Simcoe. So I think, given the answer that there is no plan for any capital that was provided by Counselor Corser, it sounds like there's no worry that the second part of the amend would, motion would have any impact, because there's no plan, then, and there's no movement to separate the two. I think, given the opportunity to make some of these improvements, recognizing this reserve, the admission that there is some concerns and some new accounting, accountant on the board coming on to help with things, I think it's, I would, you know, leaning now towards being supportive of both paragraphs, because I think maybe it is an opportunity to improve the practices. So I will wait for other comments, but thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Are there any other members of council, Counselor Reba?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love the library. And you know what? You can even borrow a book there. There's a whole lot of other things you can do. And they run a great operation as far as I'm concerned. But they are accountable for how they spend their money, but they get their money mostly from us, and we're responsible how they spend it. And so I think, from an accountability point of view, I'm very much in support of how this, of this motion. Every year, when it's budget time, we have a great deal of discussion at the library, you know, when they bring their budget here. And I think that's, that's sort of indicative, that, you know, we are all a little mystified by what that budget contains most of the time. And so I, I would be delighted if Mr. Miller and his people would work with the library board and come back to us with a report that says, everything's perfect over there. I, I would really look forward to a report like that. I'm not sure that we would get one. And I think that it's always good to have another look at how we're doing things and how they're doing things. I think in terms of the timing, I think this is a really opportune time. And I thank Counselor Negusi for bringing it forward now, because this will give our staff and the library staff time to work over the summer to figure it out and to come back with a report. Because, as you know, it's no doubt, they're in the throes of next year's budget. And I would really like to have a budget before us that is really great and is supported by all the proper documentation. So I would urge you to support this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Reba. Any other comments or questions or motions? You can't speak to it a second time, but you can move a, an amendment that I think that you're working on?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to council, I guess, I would like to put an amendment to the motion forward, to the direct motion concerning the Barry Public Library capital spending be referred to the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee in September 2025. 2024, 2024. End the conversation now.
It's moved by Counselor Corser, seconded by Counselor Kangal, the direct motion concerning the Barry Public Library capital spending be referred to the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee for September of 2024. So this is essentially referring it to committee for September's meeting versus, versus dealing with it tonight. Are there any comments or questions on the referral motion? On the referral motion, you can make comments, yes? No. Upon deferral. Okay, see, there, it was my fourth mistake of the night. So no comments. Yeah, comments. I tried to let you speak, but you saw that, you saw that. All right. All those in favor of the referral motion? It fails. We're back on the main motion. Are there any other comments or questions? any other comments or questions with regards to the main motion? You can't speak to it again.
Recorded vote.
A recorded vote's being requested. Madam Clerk? We're not gonna perceive a recorded vote yet, though. Just, sorry. Before we go there, I have to say this. When we went through the budget, we asked these questions, and I don't think they got answered. And we have the KPIs communicated, but we still didn't get the answers to the questions, at least, I'll speak for myself, I don't want to speak for us, counsel. I didn't get the answers to questions that I asked during the budget period. I think the number's bigger than it's even been communicated, because I do remember there being something called an unallocated surplus. And as far as I can tell, that's basically a cash flow amount that's able to be dipped into, which is essentially another amount of money that's sitting in the bank account, the vast city bank account and library bank account that is able to be tapped into. So I think it must be, I thought it was 2 million based on memory from a number of months ago, but it sounds like it's actually over $3 million on a $10 million budget, or 30% contingency if something were to come up and arise. Mr. Miller, the City of Barrie's reserves versus our total annual budget, what percentage of our total annual budget do we have in reserve? Now, the cupboards are bare. We get that, but just guesstimate for us.
I'm trying to think of how to answer the question. So, sorry, how many, how much is in our reserves relative to our budget?
In terms of reserves versus our annual budget, and I'm not talking about DCs and things that we aren't, don't actually own, but the tax rate stabilization reserve, the tax capital reserve, we've got...
So our operating budgets, our gross budgets around 400 million, and our capital annual budget, I'm gonna say annual, so not multi-year, is around 300, 400 million. And I think we have about 400, 500 million in reserves, most of which is sort of committed.
Uncommitted, though.
It's committed. Most of it's committed. I'd have to get back to you on the committed number.
I recall 59 million.
It's low, but some.
So we had somewhere, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 7% to 8% of our annual budget and reserve. And we have an organization that we fund that has 30%. It's a massive, massive difference. I think that if there's no spending that happens over the summertime, and that's what I'm hearing, then there's no need to worry about not allowing spending over the summertime. And I do think that there's got to be a point that's not the next budget process, where we have five or six organizations coming in, and we can't give it the time that it deserves at that budget time. And we have the pressure to just pass the budget in order to get the information that's being requested. Of the three organizations that we focused on during the last budget, and I didn't expect to come in and be having a budget talk tonight, to be blunt, the County of Simcoe, we are currently doing, Mr. Miller, a value-for-money audit. I think we've started down that road.
That's correct. Just had a meeting today.
Just had a meeting today. So we are going down the road of investigating whether we're getting value for the services they provide for us. The Barrie Police Department, of which we appoint three out of the five members, two of them sit around this table, has returned a total of, I believe it's 1.5 million, since we requested it at the last budget time, and that was due to surplus. And there's one that we asked questions of at budget time that hasn't, that has responded with KPIs, but hasn't responded with the, where do you get your surplus? How do the dollars come in? What is it allocated for in the future? What is an unallocated surplus? What does it mean? How is it used? What are the financial regulations that are in place in order to manage it? And when we ask our staff the same questions, they can't answer, because they don't know. So I think this is a really nice opportunity. An accountant brought on board at the library, a potential in terms of the time to be able to prepare it, as Counsel Reba said before, the budget, and the leadership of our finance department, which I think we have a great deal of faith in, to be able to go and answer all those questions we ask. And I don't think it means that a dollar is moved one way or another, but when a dollar is gonna be moved one way or another, we need to make sure that we just have those proper regulations in place so that we can look folks in the eye and say, oh, yeah, we know that $2 million is going towards the new southeast library, and there's $500,000 going towards a renovation at X, and we can answer those questions. But today, none of us, I don't believe, unless somebody pipes up now, I don't believe any of us can answer any of those questions about the surpluses. So I'm gonna support it as well. And Madam Clerk, I'm sorry for interrupting you after I went to you for the recorded vote.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'm going to start with Counsel Reba.
Yes.
Counsel Nixon?
Yes.
Counsel Kangal?
No.
Counsel Corser?
No.
Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Counsel Nagusi?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Morales?
Yes.
Counsel Hamilton?
Yes.
And Mayor Nettle?
Yep.
Motion carries.
That was the update from the City Hall. Thank you for watching.